I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, May 18th, 2019 meeting of the Southborough School Committee. The first item on the agenda is Public Hearing on School Choice. Pretended Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. This time it's an annual event and that includes a sharing of information about school choice, followed by some discussion, if any, and then a vote to select whether we will participate in the school choice program in FY '20. All of this is required by Mass General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, which does require that each year, this time of year, school committees consider whether their district should be in the school choice program during the upcoming school year. If the district chooses not to accept school choice pupils from other districts, we must take a vote prior to June 1 and then subsequently notify the Department of Education as to our decision. This vote is recorded and will be sent to Desi tomorrow. Historically, Southborough Public Schools, since inception of school choice, which really corresponds with Ed reform back in 1992, has not been a participant in school choice. And it is my recommendation again this year that we continue that practice and that we do not participate in the FY 2020 school year. The recommendations have been consistent throughout the years as to why we may choose not to participate and they include the current fluctuation of class enrollments during the school year, the way that a school choice program normally operates from year to year. If it were to be a decision to move forward with participating in school choice is that a district would identify which, if any, grades were open for accepting choice students. And either the district uses one of two methods, most customarily used, which is a lottery, so all the names would sort of go into a hat, proverbial hat, and the selection is random. Or folks who might be interested in choicing into the grade level that we've identified as open for choice would be sort of date stamped and we just come on a first-serve option. So we don't have an opportunity to decide which of two students would participate through any other options except a random process that the district selects. We know that each month we spend time talking about how our enrollments change from year to year. And we also have no 100% prediction that in any given year, a grade level would or would not spike due to folks moving into the district. If you were to accept a child in, let's say at grade one, that child would move through the system through grade eight. So it's not an option for the student to have to identify or a decision of the district to maintain, to retain that student from year to year. It is what happens as soon as you take a child to, under the choice program. It's also important to note that our neighboring districts, including Northborough Public Schools, has not been a participant in school choice. And I say that because we do have students moving from one borough to the next, nor our regional high school, and they have not participated as well. So a child could move through our system as a Southborough student and then find that they would not be moving on to Algonquin Regional High School because of their election or lack thereof. It's also important to note that since inception, the reimbursement for any student, receiving students under the charter of the school choice program is $5,000. And that $5,000 is about $13,737 less than what it costs to educate a pupil in the Southborough school system. So at the FY 2017 per pupil expenditure cost, which is available on the Department of Ed's website, our per pupil expenditure is $18,737. It's also, again, important beyond the boroughs. I just reviewed the list of towns that have identified themselves as choice from last year moving into this year. And it's diminished over the years. I think there's about 180 districts. And what usually happens, if you look at the map, it's neighboring districts because students are in close proximity to another district. And oftentimes that derives the selection process as to whether or not to be choice because they have no options because the students are moving from one neighboring town to the next. And we do not find ourselves in that situation because our neighbors, for the most part, are not school choice. So for those reasons, I would recommend, again, to the committee this year that we elect not to participate in the school choice program.
Okay. So we'll be voting on this under New Business. I guess the purpose of this is to hear from anyone who may have something to say. If anyone wants to chime in, that was the time. Okay, I guess that closes the public hearing on school choice and brings us to audience sharing. Anyone have anything to share on anything else? Okay, then New Business brings us back to the school choice vote.
So I have two questions and I'd like to put a motion on the floor for this. We are really voting for Southborough Schools at this being a K-8 rate.
Is there a type 0 in the motion, Roger?
So I would actually like to move that Southborough K-8 district participate in the school choice in the FY 2020 school year to direct the superintendent to inform the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education no later than June 1, 2019 of this vote. I have a reason for this, which, and I guess there's a second. It dies if there's not a second.
I'm not going to second.
I'm not going to second.
The fact that the motion gets presented that way requires no one to vote for it. So, including me, by the way. But since there's no second, I'll try a different motion. So I move that the Southborough K-8 school district vote to participate, to not... Yeah, I move that the Southborough K-8 school district vote not to participate in the school choice in the FY 2020 school year and to direct the superintendent to inform the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education of this vote no later than June 1, 2019 of this vote.
I will second that.
Okay. I mean, all I needed to hear was the dollar figures involved here. Like every year, it's woefully short. I don't see any reason why we would go along.
I would agree with that.
Nothing to add?
Okay, all in favor? That's your names.
Thank you. And we will send this off to the Department of Ed tomorrow. They've gone electronic. Usually Cheryl's very happy, usually it's a paper process, and now it's a click of the button.
Outstanding.
Yes.
And that brings us to the FINN School Improvement Plan update, I believe, right?
Yes. Good evening. Before I get started, I wanted to recognize FINN's SOS for the tremendous work that they've done over the past week for Teacher Appreciation Week. Each member of the FINN school staff is deeply appreciative of all the work and all the support that we get from our parent community. This week has been wonderful. I'd also like to highlight the fact that the month of May is Mental Health Awareness Month and tomorrow is Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. If you're free tomorrow morning, we'll be doing a Walk to School Thursday, starting at the Arts Council Rec Office on Highland Street and walking to FINN to promote mental health awareness. So please join us for that if you can. In starting the presentation, I'd like to thank the FINN School Council. The members are Michael Emhoff, he's a preschool parent representative; Michelle Palos, preschool parent representative; Jen DeLeon, kindergarten parent representative; Nicole McMahon, she's our co-chair for FINN; Kristin Skiabo, FINN school staff; and Kerry Packard, who's the executive director of Extended Day. So as you remember, or as you may remember from my School Improvement Plan presentation last May, within my two goals, I broke the action steps down into smaller yearly achievements. Tonight, I'd like to speak to the work that we've done over the past year. Within this, and within this goal, there are the following targeted areas of progress. We speak into each one in more detail throughout the presentation. Our first targeted area of progress is the establishment of building a school-based SEL leadership team with the team having a broad cross-section of staff representation. May of last year, after I presented the plan, I had about 15 staff members sign up to be part of this team. This shows the overwhelming interest in the topic of SEL. Our current team consists of classroom teachers, specialists, student support staff, all of whom are deeply committed to the theme of SEL and children's mental health. For the 1920 school year, the team and I have decided to open the team's membership up to include parents and community representation. In terms of where we are with our team in the cycle of SEL implementation and our team's work, we've touched upon most of the areas that you see on the screen. Our team recognized that we've always had a commitment and ownership to SEL, but it hasn't always been clearly communicated in part of a unified vision. We've also examined what cultivates adult SEL and what that truly means. Our team spent a lot of time on this topic and we've come to realize that in order to take better care of our students, we have to be mindful and thoughtful of ourselves. The team also examined the abundance of resources we're so fortunate to have and realized that a related area of improvement is the coordination of these resources to maximize the positive impact they have on our students, they have on our students. And finally, a very important aspect of the implementation cycle is to decide on an approach to obtain SEL data to maintain continuous improvement. The next targeted area is to analyze the Massachusetts Department of Education, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education SEL standards, currently existing on the pre-K and K level, and make recommendations for grade one using the existing standards as an SEL foundation. In this area, one of our first tasks as a team was to look deeply at the state's standards. And as I mentioned in our plan last May, Massachusetts has SEL standards established for only preschool and kindergarten. And these SEL standards use a framework based on five interrelated sets of competencies identified by CASL, or the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. Those competencies are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. What we found through our research in this series is that Massachusetts is part of the Collaborative States Initiative, or CSI. It was started in 2016 and its goal was to help states develop comprehensive state standards, pre-K to 12. As of November 2018, only 14 states have articulated competencies through guiding documents, recommended practices, or resources. And only 11 states have actually developed and established SEL standards from preschool into the upper elementary grades. Regarding our state, Massachusetts, a contact of mine in an SEL advocacy group I belong to told me that Massachusetts will not be releasing any state standards for a while as the department feels that districts are suffering from standards fatigue. In trying to make SEL recommendations for grade one, the team recognized that a lot of good work has already been taking place across our entire school, including grade one. Furthermore, in looking at the many SEL programs and resources our team inventory, most have a strong focus on grade one or upper grades. What we already have placed for curriculum and resources builds upon the work that takes place in our preschool and kindergarten. Our team also highlighted the fact that our SEL curriculum needs to reflect the developmental shifts in our students, something that isn't always recognized in the work we do. I mention this because a lot of our, a lot of SEL competency is developmentally contingent. Specifically, SEL occurs across various stages of a child's life. At certain developmental stages, some competencies are more likely to develop than others. For example, self-management skills tend to develop in preschool and elementary school, while themes like the growth mindset and a core sense of values tend to develop during middle school and high school. This slide represents our last two targeted areas. Inventory examine and assess for effectiveness based on developmental need, existing SEL curriculum programming currently in use, and determine which aspects of curriculum and programming align with state standards, school climate and culture, as well as programming and procedures. So what I've done here is I've highlighted, and I apologize for the bottom of the screen being cut off, the eight top or most-used programs or resources within our school. Looking at the current standards and aligning our resources with what we already do, we realized that the FINN school has over 20 different curriculum resources that support our state standards. Our next step is to determine the effectiveness of each resource and how each resource relates to greater comprehensive SEL goals. Another area we explored was how our resources support all of our students, including students with special needs and our English-language learners. In addition, we recognize we need greater cohesion threading with our professional development regarding SEL. We've adopted many programs and put many resources in place, but many of these programs stand alone and are not integrated within the larger context of our school or our district vision for SEL. This is an area where the team would like to broaden our discussion to the district level. Our team has also realized that just as assessment is critical for academic instruction, the assessment of SEL competencies is a cornerstone for implementing and continuously improving SEL. One of our next challenges is how to adopt measures that reflect competencies towards meeting the standards. I have a few slides to show some of the work that we are currently doing. This slide shows, highlights the formalized promotion of our SEL values at FINN. We've hung banners within all the major hallways in our school to promote our care themes. This slide represents the Instructional Foundation...
Can I just, can I ask one?
Oh, sure.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
On the bottom line on the last slide, I know it's cut off, it's also here. Is that Zones of Regulation?
Yes, I'm sorry, Zones of Regulation.
If I miss it, my eyes could say it's Population.
Zones of Regulation for the pop. Our banners. The next slide represents the Instructional Foundation that's being created and built upon for a simple, I shouldn't say simple, but for a lesson on feelings awareness. The photo to the left is a product produced from a preschool lesson and the photo to the right shows how that lesson is expanded upon in kindergarten. You can see in preschool, we're talking about very basic feelings, three to really work on, the ones that are prominent in a preschooler's life. And as you go up developmentally, you can expand upon that to have more complex feelings, such as being excited, silliness, which is a combination of feelings, and how they relate to our students. This slide highlights the work that we've done across our grades to promote the theme of gratitude, which is part of one of our programs that I had up on the screen, our Kindness Curriculum. That's based out of the Center for Healthy Minds at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. To the left, you see a kindness quilt. And each one of those squares was done by a student to promote an act of kindness. And the slide to the right is based on a book that we adopted three years ago that we've had in place for a while. It's a bucket, how is, how have you filled your bucket today? Every class has that. We promote themes of bucket filling. Students can get stars or they can actually earn pom-poms which go into a real bucket, which then can equate to class rewards, parties, things like that. In addition to some of the work that you see on the screen, our team acknowledged that we also need to take a deep look at our own social-emotional well-being. I say this because there's an influential report out by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation that found that teaching, in fact, is tied with nursing as the top five, in one of the top five most stressful occupations in the United States. And the attrition rate for new teachers within the first five years is 50%, meaning that the stress of the job is immense and it costs districts, on average, across the nation, $7 billion in terms of turnover for our teachers.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So I guess the statistic that says there's 50% turnover in the first five...
Five years, on average.
So that's factual. Do they take some sort of exit poll to say, why are you leaving? So they know that this 50% turnover is related to stress? And it could be related to a lot of things.
It is.
Performance and all kinds of things.
Well, it's not so much performance, I've read. It's related to preparation. A lot of our teacher prep programs have limited training in certain areas that teachers tend to learn on the job or in the field, so to speak. That's one area. Not in this district, but inadequate support during their first years in terms of official mentoring programs, support from teams, resources. It just, it's wide and varied, but it is based primarily on the work that's done within their role as an official teacher.
And these are teachers that leave, as opposed to you're under too much stress, so...
Leave the profession. And that's been a statistic for as long as I can remember. Remember, it's been in the 40s. I used to do the Crisis Prevention Institute training around well-being for high-stress positions in the district. And self-care, self-maintenance was one. That was, that was a big part in terms of preventing teacher burnout.
Now, I know we're talking about the, I'm entering here, if you will, or... Is that statistic K through 12, or is that just a...
It's, yeah, it is. But I'm sure if you dove into the statistics, you'd probably find that the upper grades are a little more stressful, the demands on inner-city teachers, other factors play into that.
But it's K through 12?
Yeah. So we've done a lot of work in this year to help support our staff. I brought in a health and wellness group at the beginning of the year to help staff with self-care, mindfulness practices. We did that at the beginning of the year. We also did that in March for one of our PDs. In addition to that, our staff has rallied and established an after-school exercise program. So on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, we offer exercise programs of 30, 45 minutes in length. Thursdays, we have Zumba, so please put that on your schedules. And last Friday, May 3, we had a presentation that was in conjunction with Southborough Youth and Family Services, with Meredith Charles from Drama Out of the Box, who did a whole school assembly on the importance of feelings in validating students' feelings. The next goal area is in the area of science, with, again, targeted areas of progress related to Goal 2, which I'll be speaking about in more detail throughout the presentation. This slide highlights the work that our science team did across grades. We have several specialists that met several times a year, several times this year, explored our science curricula, Connect for Learning, which is used primarily for preschool, Carolina Science, and Engineering is Elemental. And they looked at grade-specific lessons. The team acknowledged that student experiences are comparable across our grade classrooms, more horizontally aligned, and are now looking and exploring how to ensure that our curriculums have the coherence across our grades, preschool K and 1 more vertically aligned. We're looking at the scope and sequence of each curriculum and trying to isolate units that support student learning by building upon what's established in our previous grades. The first step is having our grade teachers engage in thorough discussions to gain concept consistency and coherence with basic learning expectations. This next slide highlights the area, targeted area of developing and building upon STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math, related materials and resources in the areas of life sciences, physical science, earth and sciences, earth and space. An example of STEAM I highlighted in the plan, the physical science, was our Materials Carp, which was funded through an SEF grant. This year, some things that we're really excited about related to this are two K-team leaders. Nicole McMahon and Sue Hughes wrote Southborough Ed Foundation grants to increase fun and exciting resources in the area of STEAM. Both grants that they wrote were funded. Nicole wrote a grant for two Lego walls. And the photo on the left highlights Lego wall, not in place yet at our school. Excuse me. Which will be secured in high-travel areas of the school. The theme of a Lego wall is for students to develop creativity, spatial thinking, fine motor skills, math skills, and plus, they're just playing fun and they are a great mindful experience as students travel in and out of, throughout the school. Sue's grant was for the FINN Family Farm, the photo to the right. We actually started that a couple of weeks ago. Staff and families, including one of our school committee members, Katoura, and her boys, took part in creating raised beds. They were shoveling dirt and building a perimeter fence. FINN students pre-K and 1 have already started planting vegetable seeds. And then when the seeds grow, they'll be transplanting seedlings into the 10-raised beds. Students will have the advantage of seeing their plants yield crops, which will then be incorporated into our lunch program with the work of Kyle. This one project has significant impacts with tying many of our standards together. Students at all grades can see how weather impacts the life cycle of plants, variation on plant traits, the engineering that's related to raised beds in their design and the arrangement of plants within the garden. And not only does this project have roots within science and math, pardon the pun, roots, math, but also it also ties into our SEL work as well. We're excited to have students experience the relaxing and mindful work of tending to plants within our garden. Needless to say, we're very excited about this project. We've started work in this area at grade, at K and grade one levels within our literacy... Oh, wait, that should be the top. To promote cross-curricular science integration by incorporating the use of science terms within literacy, math, music, art, and other content areas. We've started this work at K and grade one levels within our literacy block, writing, by having all of our students have their own science journals that they write in throughout the week. Our teachers ask students writing prompts which tie to science lessons and activities they've done in class. And then students will write about what they've done within their journals and illustrate the details of their thinking. In addition, Jeanette Morgan, our music teacher, is integrating the carryover of some of our science lessons. Here you have a force and motion experiment in the photo to the left that was done in kindergarten. And it's carryover into music class with the creation sounds on a Glock... on a Glockenspiel, the photo to the right. How Jeanette's been doing that is teaching students about sound waves and the variation in force, emotion, and how it relates to the fluctuation of sound at different levels. This slide with the photos, these two photos, highlight the work of planning cognitively demanding instructional tasks that effectively integrate science content and practices and the ways that ask students to read, write, and communicate like scientists and engineers. This experiment to the left is actually the traditional borax crystal experiment. I don't know if people are familiar with that. It's been around for years. And what happens is they create a supersaturated liquid, and then they drop in porous material and talk about and hypothesize how their saturated, supersaturated liquid would impact the porous material through variation. So borax, without getting into the entire lesson, borax becomes less soluble the lower the temperature of water. So they did variations on temperature. They also noticed what happened with the borax as it was cooled, and how the crystals would form in the bottom of the solution container. And how at certain up points in the porous instruments, in this case, I think it was a, oh, a, I'm trying to play, kind of a, a series of popsicle sticks that were suspended by a string into the water. They saw the results of that. In addition, I'd like to highlight two examples of where our students, after a lesson, and in this case, it was a lesson on space, extended their thinking, were supported by teachers and people in our district. One student, after a lesson on space, asked his teacher if he could build a solar oven. He and his classmates, with his teacher's permission, built an oven out of cardboard and tin foil, placed it in our courtyard, and timed how long it would take to melt ice cubes and pieces of chocolate. Kind of the traditional solar oven that Boy Stone's built. All related to solar. He was thinking about the impact of the sun. Another first-grade student, who was thinking about energy conservation and who was introduced to Superintendent Johnson, shared his idea with her on how the district could save electricity and money by having solar panels on all of our district buildings. Superintendent Johnson was so taken by this student and his thinking that she made an appointment with him to discuss the idea in more detail. And I don't know if this student is now on the Solar Committee, but he could be with the work that was done on that.
He's moving forward on the engineering design team. After that meeting, absolutely.
Sorry, I want to share the results with them.
He reviewed all of the analysis of tie and bond and was able to identify different locations, just simply from the roof structures, not just for Finn, but that all the Southboro schools. It was amazing. He was enthralled by it all, and he had the charts and the engineering design and just going through each one of them. It was exciting.
Part that I thought was incredible in that discussion, and we loved the fact that you came over and did that, was his thinking about the parking lot.
Oh, right.
And even though it wasn't a structure, how it could be utilized for solar panels to then maximize solar use.
And I was also impressed with that he was forward-thinking and posed the question, "So, Mr. Johnson, have you thought about wind power? What are you doing with wind power? Because that's the next energy source." It was great.
And finally, I have to put in another plug for the Finn Family Farm. Love to have you all stop by and show you what we've done. See students, the photo of the student to the left watering her plants. Some are going to make it, some are not. Overwatering, underwatering. But we will have plants in that garden before the end of May. And that's just a little bit of the wonderful things that are happening in Finn School. More than happy to, and this is a long shot of it from the field. 10 raised beds, two rain barrels, and a perimeter fence with a gate soon to be installed in the center. Questions, comments? I know you were talking about the farm.
Oh, yeah. So I have the farm, so who's taking care of it over in the center?
Well, it's funny you should ask, because I looked toward the camera in the community. We have, we have a parent signup sheet that the grant originator, Sue Hughes, will be sending out to the community. And it's a week-long obligation. We ask that parents and students water the garden in any crops that they yield from the plants or that are donated to the roof pantry. So we're excited about that.
Justin, were you a plant for Clayton on this? Was this a...
He just knows that my interest in all things farming and gardening.
I had a question about SEL that I'm not exactly sure how to ask. So I understand, you know, why it's important to teach kids about social-emotional learning. But how does it relate to all other kinds of learning, and just learning in general?
So, I'd love to, we could have a presentation on that at some point in time, and I would love to be involved in that. Because the research supports that SEL is the foundation for all learning. That in order for a student to be available to learn, they have to have essentially the hierarchy, Maslow's hierarchy of need map in terms of priorities. And then, they have to be connected with their teachers. They have to feel safe and secure. The statistics, the research on that, students who receive a solid SEL foundation prior to coming to school do better on average 11 to 15 points on any particular standardized test to support SEL work. So there's a lot of research that supports that. It also ties with a lot of work that we've done within our cooperative grouping and our teams. So when students take on the work of problem-solving within teams or groups, SEL is a foundation for that. Being able to relate to one another, negotiate, self-advocate, compromise, all of that is related to SEL.
And you said the state standard for this at pre-K and K?
Only pre-K and K at the moment. And if you were to dive into the state's website, the information that they have is more guiding documents and supports with statistics related to CASL. CASL really is the entity that's driving a lot of the work across the nation for SEL. In addition to that, they're highlighting some of the districts that have adopted standards and using those as models for other states. But as I mentioned, Massachusetts feels as if we're kind of saturated with standards rollout. So there's nothing on the horizon for the next few years for us, other than guiding documents and additional resources for districts.
I just have one other question. In one of the photos you showed, it said, "We're flipping the curriculum."
Oh, that's your, yeah, the...
Is that the flipped classroom concept?
No, well, actually, that's related to Connect for Learning. So the Connect for Learning curriculum program flips the curriculum in the sense that a lot of preschool curriculums were designed, were geared towards foundational reading skills. And what they do is they have reading content, but they also promote SEL. And they're really big into science and math. So it's kind of flipping, kind of the perspective on the traditional preschool curriculum.
I just wanted to comment on the assembly that was, I guess, co-sponsored with Southboro Youth and Family that took place this week. It was just so great to see the kids' lack of reluctance to participate. And so, that was about getting in front of the entire school and expressing their emotions in a variety of ways. And again, I think it speaks to, and I think we had an opportunity to do the same with the student group. But I also think that it's, again, a testament to how collaborative and how many partners we have within the community. You know, the grant-writing opportunity that was made available through Southboro Educational Foundation. But then to have Southboro Youth and Family come to Finn and do, it was an hour, I think, I think she said she would go as long as it appeared they were still engaged. So for K, pre-K and 1, to be there an hour plus, I think was a tremendous testament to how well the presentation was received. And it was really all about expressing and how they would express their emotions and feelings that day, to be regulated and ready to learn in a classroom environment, a school environment. And just, again, establishes such a positive culture. And it was fun. I think the kids had a great time.
It was fun, it was fun. I do have to put in a plug for Southboro Youth and Family Services as well. They've, over the years, been a tremendous support in helping our students with emotional and psychiatric, psychological challenges. And some of the work that they do carries over to their therapists and to their families outside of school. They do it in school, they do it during schooltime. And it's a tremendous benefit to our community. In addition, they, a lot of the strategies and work that they feel are necessary for our kids carry over to our support staff, which then can be generalized for that student in the classroom by the classroom teacher and our school psychologist and behavior specialist, so.
I just had, it's sort of a comment and maybe a little bit of a question. So on the science area, is it, I get the sense that the science curriculum has kind of expanded a little bit at Finn's side, because it does seem just more robust. And since it's not a separate special, to have it incorporated in all these various ways, I think is wonderful and a wonderful way to bring in the math and the reading and everything in a, in a way that so many kids are interested in.
And I think our time on learning and what our teachers do, you'll hear teachers say that they don't have enough time, and it's truthful. They don't, they, in some sense, would love to extend the school day in the sense that they want to get everything in for their kids. So really, what we're trying to do is that cross-curricular or cross-subject area tie-in, where they can get more, they can get it deeper, they can get it through a different means and a different perspective. Case in point, Jeanette, our music teacher, using the Glockenspiel, something force and motion, and how that relates to an experiment in science that they did in the classroom.
It's great.
It all made me very glad we're going to tuition-free, full-day kindergarten next year. So everyone gets a full day, because they need it, obviously.
We're very happy with that.
Anything else? Thanks a lot, Clayton. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Linda Murdoch dedication.
So on June 5th, I'm very happy to invite you all to join me. We are going to be naming the Performing Arts Wing at Trotter after the Trotter's first principal, and this is Linda Murdoch. And this has been, something that's been in the making for a while now. And we've been thinking about how best to celebrate our 20th anniversary and found honestly no better way than to celebrate our first principal, Linda. So on June 5th, we're going to have our whole-school end-of-day assembly concert. And she may or may not participate in that, we'll see. But after dismissal, we'll be gathering in the main lobby for a small reception. Dr. Gabran is hopefully going to join us, as well as Superintendent Johnson and other retirees and current teachers, both at the Trotter and Neary staff, that will help celebrate Linda's commitment to the performing arts. And then, we'll have a big unveiling of a plaque in her honor. And it will be bestowed on that hallway. So very much looking forward to the event and seeing teachers from the past 20 years coming back and seeing the school, perhaps grabbing a glimpse of the concert, and certainly enjoying and celebrating Linda's work. We can properly honor that part. We did a lot during her retirement, and her retirement party was a lot of fun, but her commitment to the performing arts was unyielding. It really was. It was unbelievable, and the foundation she created. And we're fortunate to have your support over the years of continuing to foster it. You saw it in display just now as you were walking in. We have the Amage Festival here at Trotter, which we have hosted for many years. That started by Linda. Not the organization, but certainly us welcoming that type of jazz education into our building is here every morning with me at 7:00 a.m., I feel like. So it's an all-day event here when it comes to music education. Linda was certainly the founder of many of those initiatives. So looking forward to the opportunity.
Sounds like very appropriate. It's in my calendar.
Yeah, excellent.
All right, next up is the 2019-20 School Committee Subcommittee and Liaison Assignments. Current ones are in the packet. The usual routine here as we look them over. If you want to make any changes, let somebody know. Old Business, MSBA Statement of Interest Mission Update.
A lot of energy at Finn within the last, always, but certainly with the activities that Clayton highlighted. But we also had a site visit from MSBA. It's actually the third part of the process. The first is actually submitting a statement of interest. The second is the review. And as reported, I think, a month ago, we, applicant pool reduced from 80-plus to 47. We were one of the 47. And what we did learn at the site visit, which was, also included Jim Joliker, our interim business manager, Greg Martin, O'Brien Fantoni. And we did extend an invitation to John Parent, who, and the town side, very much involved in energy conservation and efficiency work very successfully on behalf of the town and the schools. And also, the town administrator, Mark Purple, attended the walkthrough. And that's actually what it was. And they spent probably two hours at Finn School. We did learn at that time that because of the number of applicants and the amount of resources that were able to be allocated through this process, this round of selections, the age of the roof moved from 20-year consideration to 27. And really, you know, it's because of the number of applicants they had for roof repairs and really recognized that there were a lot more roofs older than ours. And so, the process, and this isn't atypical, it's happened before, where they've changed the point at which they would consider applications and moved that out because of the number of applications. However, while there, we had a lovely tour of the boiler room. And we had recent repairs because of the boiler replacement, the pieces that we had to replace during the winter. We closed Finn for a day. And thanks to Brian's quick work, we were able to be back on campus the next day. Went up on the roof again. I passed this time. It was scary enough the first time. It doesn't look quite high, but it's very high and quite large of a roof. So some folks went up again, and they spent considerable time walking around the roof, just examining what we had submitted on our SOI. We also learned that it's going to be a quick turnaround in terms of who they're approving and not approving. And so, they will meet on June 26th, and we'll probably find out on June 27th or 8th, depending whatever June 26th is. There is also a range of percent of reimbursement based on the economic status and readiness of the town. And so, we don't know what our percent of reimbursement would be at this point. But we will certainly find that out as we move closer to the date. So we're very optimistic. We're very happy that one project is looked at and to consideration at this point. They did encourage us, because, you know, obviously, we had conversations about, well, why not this and why not that? Part of the roof condition, conditions is set by the age really prevented us from consideration for Finn at this point. But they did suggest and strongly recommended that we resubmit next year, both projects. So that was quite an affirmative recommendation on their part. So the great work is that the work has been done. So it's a date change, and it may be an update. It was also important, I think, that Mark was there, because we did learn about the funding cycle. So, no pun intended, but the first round would be some seed money to get this project going. And that is a very quick turnaround. So if we were to be notified on the 26th, 27th that we were approved, within a short period of time, we would need to turn around $70,000 approximately very quickly for engineering and design work. It is a very prescribed process with tremendous oversight by MSBA. Whether it's a roof or a boiler, they handle each project with... Whether it's a roof or a boiler, they handle each project with finite detail. And they do have a list of engineers to do the design work that they would provide us, to us, and that we would select from. And then they partner with us all the way around through the process. In terms of funding the actual project, it would tie into our warrant cycle next spring. So the bulk of the funding that would be required to offset any reimbursement or to front-load any of the money that would be needed for reimbursement, sort of like circuit breaker, you spend it and then you get a reimbursement, would be timed, would be in good timing with the warrant and town meeting. So Mark and, and I had a conversation about accessing $70,000 that quickly, given that the budget is already approved. But I think that working in partnership with the town, you know, and passing that off to Jim and Greg, I think we have a, a good plan for that. And I think if it does come our way, we're ready to embrace that and, and we can meet that mark. So we're excited about that. And we will keep you posted. Been a while since we've had an MSBA project, so it's good. Could be the first of many to come.
Sound good.
Clayton, you were on the roof too, I forgot. I didn't, I wanted to make sure you were so noted.
Yeah, we, we were both on the roof together.
It was a small ladder.
Both of us were on the roof.
Yeah.
Just once.
You know what it was, Clayton? It was a high point for us this year. No pun intended.
Put solar up there, you could put more gardens, whatever you want.
That might be the extent of our solar, is like we'll move panels or something about. I think the student would be happy to design those.
Okay, superintendents report to the committee, the enrollments.
The enrollments are in your packet. Clayton, I think we had a conversation about kindergarten and they're still enrolling, right?
We are. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're up in the twenties.
Right, which is certainly more than we had projected. And to, to Paul's earlier comment, it is tuition-free kindergarten, full-day tuition-free kindergarten going into next year. I was actually, and this is kind of strange because it doesn't usually happen, I was asked if I would like to see a Facebook page taken down, which isn't, it's kind of a rare phone call and experience, but it was really the tuition-free, Southborough tuition-free parents who had reached out, I think my first year as superintendent. And I asked them to not take it down until I had time to send them a thank you and acknowledge the great work that the parents, who had partnered with school committee and subcommittees and a lot of folks to, to make this happen in a very short period of time. Two and a half as opposed to the projected three to five. And I may never ask them to not take down a Facebook page again, but do want to send something off. And Sarah Cassell was very happy about, about that, so. Great work, very exciting. And I, I don't know how much that impacts enrollment. You know, it, it would, I would suspect encourage folks to move forward. And you, Clayton, you had your orientation already, right?
We did, 27th and 28th, and we had probably 20 to 30 parents in each session. Three to four sessions, three sessions one day, four the next. Great turnout. Lot of parents signing up for SOS. Got many questions about the tuition, so.
Yeah, and that's good for the first time. I also just want to comment on the flip side. I'm always amazed, and I don't know if we fully appreciate from month to month how important this zero is on the bottom line. Looks like we had a lot of movement and for some strange reason, we find ourselves with five out and five coming in exactly. But the fact that we have such stability in our class enrollments from month to month is, is just tremendous. And that, that's something that I think really is powerful in terms of continuity of, of teaching and learning in the classroom. So I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to that. The expenditure report is also in your packet this evening, and I would suggest that we have two significant projects that are still underway, actually three. And so while our bottom line looks healthy, what is not reflected in this bottom line will be the successful award of the RFQ for the installation of security cameras throughout the district, which is expected to be awarded shortly and completed before school is out in our schools in a, a non-invasive way. That was requirement of the bid. And then we had talked earlier about the importance of flushing our pipes, the glycol issue that has been there for some number of years and has been a growing concern. And that's something that we would like to have happen this year. So we do have current quotes, and so between facilities rental and, which we've held in abeyance for these larger projects, and then the budget, those will fund those two significant projects. And that will be done where Brian had so noted when he did, when he presented his capital plan at Trotter, which is the most critical place, and also to some extent at FINN, and a lesser extent at Woodward, Neary's fine. And what that assures us of is that our pipes, if, if we have significant below temps in winter and cold weather, will not burst. And so this is something that is sort of like anti-freezing your car. You have to flush the system. And I think this has been an issue for 10 or plus years or more that has needed to be done. And the third project is of course the Woodward driveway. We toured the external site and the wall, and the space in the wall that is adjacent to the municipal building. And so met with Mark Purple and the OPM to discuss adequate fencing between the municipal building and actually Woodward. And I think we're scheduled to revisit this 11. I saw your 11 and didn't see the rest of it, so I assume, oh, we're, we're set. That's it because it was a chain.
There'll be a discussion this Friday.
So Jason Melonasky, who's done a phenomenal job with just having this project come to fruition and has really taken our thoughts into consideration as the project has continued. And Mark will be meeting, and Greg will be meeting with us on Friday, just to make sure that there is a safe barrier between the two. And right now it's proposed vegetation and fencing. The driveway project is underway. The, the money for that project to come, to complete, completion is in reserve in our revolving account and was set aside because last year we just had such horrific win, summer weather, and the contractors were not available when we were ready. So we basically closed Woodward this summer for our classes, our summer programs, because of the uncertainty of when that construction will take place. So our, our programs that have been launched at Woodward in prior years for the summer have been relocated. And we're working with the REC to provide Trotter access for them as well, because we simply don't know when the construction is going to start. The delay is not on the school side and not really on the town side, but there's some questions about how this proposed walkway will tie into the Main Street project, and there are some conservation questions on that side. So they're resolving all of that. And again, Karen Gallagher, the DPW superintendent, has been great to work with and full cooperation from the town. So that's what we're waiting for, and we all agree we need to regroup and set a new timeline. But we're on hold right now. But we're fine. Everything's in place. Money's available, and we're just waiting for the go button. And the same contractors that we met with last year will be on site and available to continue the project. So it's good. Lot of, lot of work.
You know, that will be done before school starts?
It is, we will, as, well, I can't say that because I don't know when they're going to hit the go button. The plan was to have it done by June. So if they move forward, everyone really fully appreciates that it, that has to be completed. The municipal building is moving right along, and I think they would love to have both of them coincide with a grand opening. The pass-through is already cut, so the entryway that was going to come from the municipal building through the Woodward lot, so it was a one-way access, they've already cut that through the fence. So that's in place. We were surprised to see that when we were walking around. So that's the intent. I will also just remind everyone, and we've talked about it at Central, that our concern last year is the same concern this year because the timing changed on the Main Street project as well. And there will be some bus rerouting potentially or bus issues when they start the Main Street project because they'll be digging up all over town. But again, everyone's on board for the conversations. So with all that said...
Do, do we know why it's not, why not delayed, why it won't be done by June?
It's because of a conversation that's being held at, at Conservation, for some reason on the town side, with the tie-in to the, the walkway from the...
The Conservation.
Yes. So I, and I know those conversations are ongoing, and everybody who needs to be involved is involved. And we don't, we just need to know when the go button will be pushed because our design and our plan is still intact. So it's good news. And so I would request a vote to, for the expenditure report, April 30th expenditure report. I approve to a lot of the...
So I will move that we approve until audited the monthly general fund expenditure report on the April 30th, 2019, for the Southborough Public School District fiscal year 2019.
Second?
Moved by Ryder, seconded by Cottura. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Educational policy, we have none at this time. So it brings us to policy development and our distribution. We have some second readings.
So since the last first reading, prior meeting, we did send this back out to principals for feedback and input. And we also posted the two policies to our district website, and we had no comment or feedback from those two, those groups. We had a couple of minor changes, but nothing significant. So the policies really are, are as they were at the first reading. So I would recommend a vote to approve from the committee at this point.
What's, what's E240?
So E, E240, it should be...
Did it change, did it change policies?
Correct. So it was J270 was student assigned to buses, and what we did was we aligned it to Northborough and the region, so it had the same policy number and name, but it's, it's the same policy. So J...
So E240...
Replaces J270.
Replaces J270.
Correct.
I have one minor edit before we make a motion, so you can take this into account. On the homework guidelines, on page two, it has the bullet points on weekly guidelines for homework times. Unless I'm mistaken, I think two and three are the same, right? Page, page two of the guidelines, last page?
So the second and, and third bullet?
Yeah.
For grades two and grades three.
So just say two, three instead of any of the other bullets?
Simplify it.
We have a motion for, I guess we can do both at once?
Make a motion. A move that we vote to approve the bus transportation E240 and homework I190 policies.
As edited?
As edited.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. And that brings us to personnel items, personnel reports. Few appointments, retirements, transfers.
It's a little bit of everything.
Communications? Nothing, I guess. Action on minutes from the April 10th meeting. Make a motion?
On the week to accept the minutes from the meeting, Southwood School Committee opened the meeting on Wednesday, April 10th, 2019.
Moved by Jessica?
Second.
Second by Jen. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Pills and payrolls are here.
May I ask a question on staff changes?
Sure.
The music teacher one-year position at Neary. Who, who had that position that doesn't have that position?
Lee Spignese had taken a leave. And staff have an opportunity to take another year, depending on their circumstances. So I believe this is the same reappointment of the person who was in the position to begin with. So Linnea has been with us this year because Lee had taken a leave and we're very happy that she's returned. But it still remains a one-year position.
So it has, it's kind of like we're reappointed every year, then?
She is appointed until, a determination is made whether the person that she's filling in for basically is going to return or not return. So teachers have an opportunity to take a leave and then extend that leave for a second year. And that's what we have in this case.
Stand by for next month. We have election of officers. Trotter Middle School Improvement Board?
Grand finale.
Grand finale.
Subcommittee assignments, I guess?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. Audience sharing once again. Anyone have anything to share? Yes.
We have two members, or we have Jen, who's on the school start time, and Clayton, who's also on the committee. You'll see, you'll receive an email tomorrow. We do not have the final draft yet. But it is important that we continue the work, so we're going to convene. And if we have the, the final draft, we'll review that. If not, we'll do some planning for the future. So it will be May 21st at Algonquin at 8:30. But I wanted to give you an early alert preview.
Okay.
I have a question. Do we have any, and I missed the first one minutes, but do we have any, I think, of the report from the school bus consultants?
That's the report, the draft, yeah.
Oh, that, the one you're actually talking about, okay.
We have a combined coming up in June, right? We'll probably...
We have a combined prior to the regional meeting, and it may not end up on the agenda, depending on the discussion of the subcommittee. But what may happen is some significant work over the summer, because the, it needs to be reviewed first. And based on, I think, the participation of four school committee members at an MASC presentation, returning with some great ideas about strategy. Kathleen Pelacchio is the liaison for the Regional High School, and she is the liaison to the subcommittee. So she actually met with Greg and myself and sort of articulated some of the information that was shared at that. And I think that's going to be a key point of the conversation with the subcommittee. It's open to any school committee member. If you are in the area and you want to attend, that's great. And that will be prior to the combined meeting, so that, there will be a determination there as to whether or not it's ready to go to school committee in June. And we may not have it, so it may just be a presentation of a timeline.
So what's the, what's happening with the delay?
The data, the amount of data that they have, you know, there was some conversation about whether taking, we should take action on partial data, and it sort of doesn't make sense to do that because we would find ourselves in the same place we've been before, halfway down, you know, a road and having to back up that road because we didn't have all of the information. So instead of, instead of moving forward with partial information, it's best to wait for the complete draft to come our way. The delay was their ability to access all of the information they needed through NRT's TransFinder so that they could give us all of the analysis as opposed to what we've already seen, which was partial analysis. And we, Greg and Jim met with NRT this week, and they have assured us that that information will be going forward. It was the actual GPS information that identified specific stops and times. You have the routes and then you have reality. and times. You have the roads and then you have reality. And so we needed reality to match the roads. And that's what we were waiting for.
So it was just hard to obtain?
It's hard to abstract, yeah. And they had some delays on their end with staffing and so forth. So it wasn't a purposeful delay. It's just a delay.
Yeah.
But great question. Thank you.
Any other share? Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Rogers leaning in, that you need something.
I move to adjourn.
By Rogers, second by Couture. Discussion, all in favor? All in your.